Good morning, everyone. Call to order, the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, and we will begin with a formal roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Antor, Baker.
Here.
Brevi.
Here.
Boojak.
Brother.
Burl.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Hennessy.
Hildenbrand.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Legrand.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
Oliver King.
Here.
Peckla.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Sparks. Teal.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Chair Stec.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 members present and three absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. When I move to our invocation, I will call on Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. Last night, at least 16 of our fellow Americans lost their lives in a mass shooting, this act of census violence, in Lewiston, Maine. Dozens more injured, families are mourning the loss of their loved ones, and the search for the suspected murderer is still ongoing. Please join me in a moment of silence and prayer in memory of those who lost their lives, for those working to bring the perpetrator to justice, and for an end to violence and a renewed respect for the dignity of life. Thank you. So, we gather this morning in a broken world. We're here to attend to the business of our community, but we know that the world is hurting. A mass shooting in Maine, war in the Holy Land, war in Ukraine. I think I can speak for all of us that, when I say that it's easy to feel helpless at times in today's world. Last night, I recalled the prayer of St. Francis of Assisi, and I'm going to ask that you'll pray it with me this morning. As we long for peace and justice in the world, this prayer is a reminder of how we can serve as instruments of peace in our own lives and in our own community. Let us pray, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is a special order of business, and this morning we have with us Mr. Bill Ward from Network 180 to present to us.
Good morning, Chairman Stec. Commissioners, thank you for inviting me here today. I did have prepared remarks, which I will get to in a second, but I think that, I just want to acknowledge that in the recent events over the last 24 hours, mental health services are greatly needed for our community. And hopefully, I'm going to bring some positive news for some initiatives that we are doing here in Kent County. I want to thank the Commission for its investment with ARPA funds for enhanced, not only crisis services in Kent County, but the entire continuum. Today, I'm here to talk about two things: where we are at with those crisis services, and a new program that we're bringing to Kent County. So, the first area I would like to address is mobile crisis response, which is one of the programs that this Commission has invested in. For about the past five years, Kent County has, or Network 180 has been operating mobile crisis response, not only for kids, but for adults. Unfortunately, because of budget restraints, this program is not a 24/7 program, which is what we would like. They operate in 16-hour shifts, and oftentimes, there's only one team available, as opposed to having multiple teams available. But over this next year, we're going to go through a complete planning process to enhance those services, so we can build upon the great work that we're doing already. As you can see, since 2002, Network 180 has responded to over 3,000 calls for mobile crisis response. This directly impacts diversion from the emergency room and jail. This year alone, in 2023, we saw an additional uptick of 9.4%, which equates to about 952 responses. As I said, this next year is going to be a planning process. We are working diligently with the Kent County Sheriff's Department, and have, we could put together a subgroup of Network 180 employees, as well as the Kent County Sheriff's Department. Oftentimes, right now, the mobile crisis response is not as seamless as we would like. A call will come into 911 Dispatch, Dispatch will then call Network 180, and then there will be, the team will be sent out at that point. We are now looking at the possibility of actually embedding a social worker at 911 Dispatch, so that handoff can be seamless. In addition to that, over this next year, we're going to plan on how we are going to enhance the response for 24/7, whether that is a co-response model, whether that is a diversion response model, where we would be able to triage that law enforcement is not needed at that response, and therefore, we could just send out the mobile response team. So, more to come on that. We're really excited to be working with the sheriff on this. The other major initiative that was funded by this Commission was the Behavioral Health Crisis Center. And I'm happy to report, I think some of you were there, we had our groundbreaking in May. The facility is going to be located on the campus of St. Mary's. I've brought some pictures to show you where we're at. We've made huge, tremendous progress since May. We have walls going up, we have rough utilities in, we've done some landscape enhancement. But we're really excited that we believe we are going to make our March 1 opening date, so construction will be completed in February. We are on time and under budget, so I'm happy to report that as well. When completed, the center will serve about approximately 6,000 to 8,000 patients a year. We will be implementing what we're calling a no wrong door policy. We have worked with some of the private insurers as well, so anyone that comes into the center will be served, and we will be able to serve them regardless of their insurance status. It will operate 24/7. It will have two components to it. The first component will be the, what we're calling the brief intervention, or the triage center, which hopefully, we can resolve the crisis within one to two hours. But if necessary, we do have the secured facility, which will operate kind of in the back end of the facility, which will have 16 units, which will be secured. We will have a drop-off point for the Sheriff's Department, as well as any other law enforcement. The goal is for that drop-off to take place within six minutes, and we will have rapid access to physical health at the hospital if necessary. So, the other big initiative that I've come to talk to you about today is the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic. For the past two years, three years, I'm sorry, Network 180 has been operating a $1 million SAMSSA grant to serve what is called the mild to moderate population, which is a population that normally Network 180 will not serve. This past September, we were awarded status in the state demonstration program that will allow us to open our doors up to anyone in Kent County who needs services through Network 180. But the great thing about it is we will be able to enhance the services. Oftentimes, what I hear from individuals is that if I can't get into CMH, my benefit is more limited, whether it's outpatient, whether it's inpatient, but there's no in-between initiatives or therapies that are available because their insurance company won't pay for it. Under this new model, anyone can qualify for that. It is a comprehensive program, it is evidence-based, and it has an evaluation tool attached to it to make sure that we're achieving those outcomes. We are funded now to be in this program through 2026, and we are hopeful that the federal government, in its wisdom, will make this program permanent. So, what does that mean? What is different about it? We will be able to meet people where they're at, we will be able to offer flexible and extended hours. And I think this is one of the most critical things that we can do. We will be now able to offer services to veterans, as well as uniformed officers. In the past, the Veterans Administration was the primary provider of those services. Now, Network 180 can step in and deliver those services. This is pretty revolutionary, having worked with the VA on initiatives before. This could be a real game changer when it comes to our veterans, as well as our uniformed officers. So, as you can see, we now will be able to offer nine core services that are not currently available, that range from 24-hour access, screening, psychiatric rehabilitation services, traditional outpatient, but probably one of the biggest things is targeted case management. Oftentimes, I hear from individuals who are going through their private insurance that if they had targeted case management, which is a social worker that's going to walk side by side, that individual, to help them not only with their psychiatric needs, but also with even some of their basic needs, it really has a positive outcome, as we're trying to prevent an individual from going into crisis. This final slide I just wanted to show you is that the revenue projections that we're seeing for this year, for the CCBHC demonstration, will net an additional $35 million to the residents of Kent County. So, we're really excited that this is the amount of money that we think we need to actually take care of these individuals. Big difference from when we were in the grant program, which was a million dollars, so it was very difficult to make, stretch those dollars. Now, we believe that we are going to get appropriately funded to really open the doors up. Thank you, Commissioner Stec.
So, you promised me eight minutes. You did it. Good for you. All right. We'll open it up for any questions or comments, if Commissioners have any. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Bill, for that presentation. It was really fast to get in the eight minutes. Can you go back to that slide with the nine points? Because we stopped, there we go. Could you just go through some of the rest of those extra ones? Because this program is really exciting. We kind of stopped at the targeted case management.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, peer family support and counseling services, those are individuals that we're going to work with, the family members, as well as an individual that has a lived experience. So, we employ individuals who are working through their recovery, and then they can share their experience. It's kind of a non-therapeutic, but at the same time, those individuals have lived experience. Outpatient is your traditional outpatient and substance use disorder services. We involve the family in the planning of the treatment, so we really think it's important that, that all members of the family plan together on how that recovery is going to work. And then, obviously, the community-based program for the veterans.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Any other guests? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I know we're not voting on anything here, but just for transparency, my, I have a son who's received some state services connected through Network 180, so I just wanted to disclose that to my colleagues. My question is, so-
That made you qualify to sit on the board?
My question is in regards to, so, the outcome-based, you know, focus on programs, and I think the slide before this, you talked about like being data-driven, and all of those things, I think, are very good, to make sure that there's, you know, kind of accountability and structure baked into whatever, whatever the program is. The flip side is, you know, I know personally, like, the administrative burden to collect data, to be able to, like, you know, report on certain things, can end up significant in terms of time, hassle, cost, et cetera. And so, how do you see kind of balancing, you know, those factors, so that, you know, the administrative burden, either on those receiving services, or on your own staff, you know, doesn't outweigh the benefits of being data-driven and being able to get that data?
Great question, Commissioner. It is a challenge, you know. With government money comes a government accountability, and sometimes, it does have an administrative burden. One thing that this program has, some of the requirements on the administrative side are less than what is under the regular Medicaid manual, but those assessments at the beginning are going to be pretty much in tandem with regular CMH services. So, it is a balance, and I think it's a demonstration program, so I think it also offers an opportunity to go back to the, the state actually gets to design the program, to say after a one- or two-year experience, to say, "We don't think this stuff is really valuable," as opposed to this stuff that's over that. So, we're always having those kind of conversations. But yeah, it's, it's a challenge. I'm not going to, you know, it's, there are some administrative burdens that I would love to throw out the window tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Yes. Commissioner Peckla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for this update. It was great to learn more about the services. You started the presentation saying that the hotline was not available 24 hours due to budget constraints. And I'm curious, obviously, we would love to have all the money in the world, but is there a clear delta between what would be the practical ideal version of funding compared to what you currently have, and if you might be able to expand on that?
Yeah, so let me clarify. The crisis line, as well as 988, which is the new suicide prevention line, is always available 24/7. We have people staffed at access center, on Christmas, I call them, because they're working on Christmas, and I thank them for doing it. What is not available 24/7 is the mobile crisis response team. So, and that's just because of, we have, you know, at the time, the program was only funded through Medicaid. So, since, since we started this journey on the crisis continuum, we have now been able to bring insurers to the table, as well as the supplemental funding that we receive from the county, is going to be able to expand that to 24/7, and to have multiple teams available. So, maybe it wasn't clear in that, but there is always someone inside the access center 24/7, and that will be the same once the, the center's open downtown as well. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll limit myself to a couple. So, I'm going to go back to the CSU, the Crisis Stabilization Unit, that's currently being constructed. I'm going to have you just talk a little bit more about the no wrong door in that, in that facility, meaning that while traditionally, we think of Network 180 as a Medicaid or Healthy Michigan provider, I believe that, that facility is available to anybody, whether insured, uninsured, Medicaid, Healthy Michigan, it matters not. There's no determination as to whether they ought to be at that facility versus someplace else. Anybody and everybody who's in crisis can go there.
Great question, Chairman Stec. So, I guess the best way to equate this too is, so, right now, under crisis services, if you end up at an emergency room, whether it's Butterworth, whether it's St. Mary's, whether it's Metro, if you are a Network 180 consumer, that hospital's going to call us, and then we're going to do a screening for inpatient. If you are not, let's say you have Leucrosbeau Shield, or Priority Health, that hospital is going to call that insurer, and they're going to dictate how the benefit will be managed at that point. At the crisis center, there will be no collection of insurance at the front end of, once you get there. We are going to address the immediate crisis need, and we're going to worry about what funding source we use to pay for it on the back end. So, it truly is a no wrong door. There, you know, you know, I, you know, I also equate it to, you go to your doctor's office, and the first thing that the doctor asks you, "Have you had any changes in your insurance?" That question is not going to be asked. We're going to alleviate the immediate crisis, and then get that person to the help that they need. I hope that answers your question, Chairman Stec.
Yeah, good. So, the other component that maybe you can talk a little bit about is secure facility. Now, by secure, we don't mean that there's a guard at the front to make sure that nobody breaks in or breaks out, but what do we mean when you talk about the facility is a secure facility?
Well, the secure facility, you'd be admitted into the secure facility under, you know, some strict criteria. It can be voluntary or involuntary, based on the nature of that crisis, but it is a crisis event that our clinicians believe can be resolved at a maximum of 72 hours. If we think the crisis is of that nature, that it's going to be above 72 hours, then we're going to be recommending inpatients, and we're going to get that person to Pine Rest or Forest View. But it is a step down from an inpatient facility, but it is involuntary or voluntary placement, but it is a locked facility, so there's a lot more rules behind it being locked, and the things that we have to, to go through as we're resolving that crisis.
And then, last question, am I correct that we also had to change state law in order to be able to do this?
Yes. I want to thank the Kent County Commission, as well as the Administrator's Office for helping with us. PA 402 of 2020 did create this, and I'm happy to say that the primary authors for that legislation was Network 180 and Kent County Administration.
All right. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry. I just want, having been at the CMH conference earlier this week, and did, having done a deeper dive into the crisis stabilization model, I just wanted, if you can just address quickly, the, what I learned was, we're going to save inpatient beds, because a lot of, a lot of stabilization people get screened into inpatient, so hopefully, this will be opening much-needed beds, but also that this is not like, and a lot of us are aware of the Pine Rest emergency room, but it's not that either, because there will be treatment offered at this place stabilizing people. So, those are both two, you know, things that cleared, that cleared up the idea in my mind.
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner Legrand. So, the way that the crisis continuum should function is that you want to have the individual be placed in the right setting, based on their need at that point. To Chairman Stec's question earlier, is the, the CSU is really there to try and resolve the crisis in under three days, as opposed to putting, having someone being placed in an inpatient facility. Right now, the only option, since this service is not available right now, and didn't exist until we created it, that, that oftentimes, that crisis event, that individual is at a level that it would benefit from the CSU, but since the CSU does not exist, that individual has to be placed in an inpatient facility, which then will be a, you know, $15,000 visit, because they're going to be there from 10 to 15 days. The, the average cost for an encounter at the CSU is going to be $1,250 per 24 hours. So, and then, that individual that's being discharged from the CSU could then go on to a crisis residential facility, which is much less expensive than an inpatient, or maybe they're ready to go home. But again, that discharge planning is going to dictate what that next guidance is going to be. To your point about lowering our costs, but inpatient, I think it's going to have a secondary effect, too. Not only will it lower our costs, but it will also allow us to keep more individuals in Kent County. Oftentimes, what's happening in the emergency rooms is, we are actually looking for beds all over the state. So, I can tell you right now, there is probably a Kent County resident in Oakland County, in an Oakland County facility, or in a Lansing facility, or in a Saginaw facility, because it oftentimes is just that challenging to find a bed. So, we're hopeful it's going to have two effects, which is lower our costs, but at the same time, we're going to be able to keep residents in Kent County, and then their family, to the point I was talking about earlier, can be part of the discharge planning, and they're not in a car going down 96 for two hours to go visit their loved one.
Thank you.
Well, that intrigues me to ask one more. So, yes, indeed, to the extent that we can have these individuals at the CSU, instead of the inpatient hospital, it's significantly less expensive to the system. To the extent that those individuals otherwise would go to jail, can now be diverted to the secured CSU. That, too, is significantly less cost than the jail?
Well-
I think that's maybe a question for our sheriff, but I believe that's the case.
I would agree with you on two fronts, too. One of the, not only will it lower the cost of, of unnecessary booking into the jail, it's also going to lower the cost of the emergency rooms. Often, right now, is what we're hearing, is that the emergency rooms are also writing off significant amounts of care. One of the challenges that the CMH system also brings up is, is unless you're going into an inpatient facility, or an inpatient wing in an acute care hospital, there is no eligible services for, for CMH in there. So, what we're trying to do is also be good partners to our hospital providers, to say, "No, this is where we can serve them in the appropriate environment."
All right. Again, if there's no other questions or comments, thank you so much for your presentation this morning. We look forward to, to, one, the work of the CCBHC, and opening that CSU.
Again, thanks for having me here.
All right. Next item is public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address the board on an agenda item only, you may do so at this time. You will have up to three minutes. Please identify the item on the agenda you wish to address, and identify yourself.
Good morning, Chairman Stec.
Good morning.
Commissioners, and staff, and my fellow citizens. Thank you, Commissioner Green, for your invocation. Again, my name is Daniel Scott, longtime resident of Kent County, but more importantly, again, I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. I wanted to speak to 102623117 about the Health Department and the problems in our county with alcohol, quote, "alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use and violent behaviors." I would just remind you that the almighty Lord God says in his holy scriptures that one major solution to this increasing that we're seeing is to stop making these substances so available. And I'm just, I'm just speaking to you as leaders. I'm not sure what you can do, other than speak out and, you know, advocate for this. I see it again almost every day, being 43 years in the inner city of Grand Rapids. So, not only are we called now the Beer City, and people seem to be proud of that, but now we're also becoming the Weed City. I counted 20 weed stores from Comstock Park to the north, to Cutlerville to the south, I-96 to the east, John Ball Park to the west. Marijuana is a gateway drug to many other more dangerous drugs. I know about that personally, because before I was a follower of Christ, I was a heavy user of marijuana. It leads to cocaine, heroin, fentanyl, and of course, magic mushrooms, as it's called. By the way, the marijuana today is so much more powerful than it was 46 years ago, before I became a follower of Christ. And I'm warning you that it's only going to get worse. The more we make this marijuana available, the more it's going to impact our city. And we just saw in California, an illustration of what harder drugs can do, with that pilot on that plane, almost taking 100 people to their death. Let's do all we can to just stop making it available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. If not, we'll move to the next item, which is the consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair Stec. I move the adoption of the consent agenda.
Is there support?
Supported.
Supported by Commissioner Teal. Questions or comments? All right. If not, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Antor, Baker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brevi.
Yes.
Commissioners Boojak.
Yes.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks. Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to our resolutions on item eight, and I will call on Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Chairman Stack. I move Resolution 115 at today's date, the 2023 Apportement Report, coming to us from the Equalization Department.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner, oh, where am I right? Somebody, Commissioner Boojak, thank you. Questions or comments? If not, this is a voice vote. All those that support the motion say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose say no. It is approved. For item 8B, I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I move that Resolution 116 of today's date, Low Income Water Assistance Consolidated Appropriation Grant for 2024, which comes to us from the Kent County Community Action.
Thank you. Is there support?
Supported by Commissioner Diaz.
Questions or comments on this motion? I see none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 116, Commissioners Antor, Baker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Boojak.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 116 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 8C, and I'll call on Vice Chair Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 117 of today's date. It's the Lake Shore Regional Entity Substance Use Disorder Prevention Programs from the Health Department.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments? All right, I see none. This also is a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 117, Commissioners Antor, Baker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Boojak.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
The, the, it's decided by the election itself. With that being said, that was too wordy in my view to just simply incorporate all of that into this. I realize that our current standing rules already say that we will comply with state law. Given this deals with vacancies and there was a recent change, I just thought making sure that there was a reminder to check state law in this rule would be pertinent. Hence, the rewrite and in the original proposed draft, it was listed in the paragraph detailing vacancies for officers, putting it at the end just to make sure we're aware that it applies to everything involving a vacancy.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the motion to amend? Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you, Chair. I noticed on the proposed change that the standing committees, except for the executive committee, are all amended to have up to nine members, and I was just curious as to the thought process to have that applied to all of the standing committees except for the executive.
I guess I'm going to refer to the maker of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so the executive committee is established in a different section of rules. So, you know, the, the executive committee is made up of the board chair and then the vice chair and chairs of the three standing committees. So that's addressed in a different section of the rules. So, we didn't, we didn't include that in, in the up to nine board members serving on the three standing committees.
I would say my understanding is that the rule proposed would call for seven or potentially eight members on the executive committee. All right, any other questions or comments? If not, there's no request for a roll call, so all those that support the motion say yes.
Yes.
That oppose say no. The motion to amend is approved. So now we're back to the underlying motion. Any further questions, comments, or considerations? Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, there is, as was clearly mentioned, a amendment before. All the commissioners, everybody should have a copy. This amendment would change the current proposed rule so that instead of the part where it says if desired by the chair to add one at-large member to the executive committee, specifically standing rule 5.3, numeral five, it shall read one at-large member who shall be selected by the chair of commissioners who are not declared members of the chair's political party.
Okay, and again, a note for the record that that is in a written form, been distributed to all of the members of the commission. Is there support for that motion to amend?
Support.
Worded by Commissioner Baker. Questions or comments? Commissioner Coleman.
Just to make sure I understand this one, per the question on the last amendment, if this, this language change was adopted, would, would we also need to change, I guess it'd be 4.0D to say seven or eight members?
Yes, we have considered that, but I do not believe that it's required. I'll ask Lynda to comment.
Actually, the way the, the other provision D is worded, it says consisting of seven as identified in 5.3, and we're changing 5.3. So you could, we can make a, a technical change, seven or eight. I don't think a formal amendment is necessary.
Thank you. Just to clarify, we're proposing to change 5.3. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner LaGrande.
Thank you, Chair. Just a point of clarification, does this, maybe this is, maybe this is for Lynda, but the, does this mean that another person could be chosen who is not of the chair's party? So could it be, does this allow them to, the chair to choose another member of their own party?
The motion to amend.
Or does it totally allow for the choice of someone from the opposing party?
I'll ask the maker of the motion. My read on it was it would not change the portion of the proposed rules that would provide that this would be a member of the minority party or the party other than the chair's party.
Okay.
Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think it basically would make it from discretionary to mandatory.
Right.
All right, any, I'm sorry. Commissioner Baker, did you have a hand, or Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. So I'll be supporting this amendment. I do think it makes sense, given the other changes we've made to the executive committee. I don't necessarily think that the rule provision that was passed to the committee itself is inherently bad or, but I just believe this amendment is better. You know, as I look at it, especially what we just voted on, while I think it made sense to remove the requirement that the chair of the board serve as a chair or vice chair of a standing committee, that does now mean that without the chair, a future chair exercising their ability to appoint that additional at-large member, we have a likelihood of having a, a six to one dynamic between members of the majority party and the minority party, which is proportionally far lower than the current dynamic of four members of the majority party and one member of the minority party. So given the fact that we are expanding the executive committee, I think that this provision at least ensures that the breakdown that currently exists that allows for deliberative discussion ensures that that happens going forward. You know, as I look to it, the rule changes we're voting on today will be effective in 2025. We do not know, that means it will be effective with a new term after a new election. We don't know the outcome of that election. We don't necessarily know the breakdowns of the, of the commission at that time, nor who will hold the majority or who will be chair. But I do know that we will likely remain a body with a near even split as we have for the last three terms for most of the last decade. I know that we have benefited from the current dynamic on the executive committee. I know that we benefit from broad representation on our committees, and I simply believe making the appointment mandatory while still affording the chair the right to choose who to appoint will ensure that the current breakdown that we have is retained with the extended, with the expanded executive committee. For that reason, I'll be voting for the amendment and hope you will as well. Thank you.
All right, now Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, at the last time, we did consider this in September, I was reading from, prior to the meeting, the memo that was sent by Lynda Howe and that says that this is outlining the changes that would occur. And number three, it says the executive committee would be comprised of, as it is, and one at-large member. So when I came to the last meeting, I was under the impression that there was going to be a guaranteed member of the minority party. And, and then I read more closely this time and realized that that was not true. So this, in essence, if we had the current makeup of the commission in 2025, we would, we would be guaranteeing the possibility of seven of 12 Republicans and zero of nine Democrats being on the committee, unless the chair so desired to have the representation of one Democrat. And given that unfortunately, our political party representation in this era tends to be broken down along geographical lines, we are essentially writing, if we vote for this, if we don't vote for the amendment, we're essentially saying that it is in the best interest of the county that we ensure the possibility of seven representatives who live outside the cities of Grand Rapids, Kentwood, and Wyoming have representation and zero persons that live in the county, in the cities of Kentwood, Wyoming, and Grand Rapids, would have representation on the executive committee. So unless the executive committee doesn't really do work that's important for the, for the county, then we are essentially saying that if this is an important work to do for the best interest of the county, if we vote for the rules as written without this amendment, we would be saying it would be in the best interest of the county to exclude representation from 45% of the, of the county. And I just don't see how we could possibly proceed with that. And I also think it's important to consider, what if this was different? What if the 12 members were the Democratic Party? Would it be in the best interest of the county to exclude, to make it possible to exclude the voices of those that don't live in Grand Rapids, Kentwood, and Wyoming? This is about more than, this is, this should not be about, this should not be an arena to fight out the political partisanship of our society. This should be about the arena, about figuring out how to run the best interests of this county. And that's, I can't support this, the rules as written without this amendment, because we would be choosing, this body as a whole would be choosing to exclude representation of much of this, of this county.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you, Chair. A thank you to Commissioner Baker. I couldn't have put it any better myself. With that being said, I will be requesting a roll call on this motion.
Mr. Elderbrand.
Just one clarification, the minority vice chair of the board sits as a vice chair of one of the standing committees. So therefore, he or she will automatically be on the executive committee based on that role. So I guess to clarify what Commissioner Baker's saying, there, the minority party is automatically represented. There's no way to have zero members on the executive committee based on how the rules are presented.
Under the current rules, that is so, that the minority vice chair must serve as an officer of one of the standing committees and therefore does sit as a matter of right on the executive committee. So there would be, assuming that the, of the five, the other four would be of the majority party, there would be one minority party mandated on it. Under the proposed rules, that would still be the case. The numbers would be different, but.
Where is that?
Rule 1.5 in the standing rules. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. So I, I understand the, the core of the proposed amendment is whether or not the chair has discretion on this particular appointment. But beyond that, I think I've gotten myself more confused about the, the context of this change. So I just, I just want to make sure I understand that context. And so I guess it's two questions. The first would be, so with the previous comments by my commissioner colleague in regards to kind of the expected partisan makeup when these take effect in 2025, I appreciate his, his confidence in a particular outcome, but I'm not sure that that'll be the case, that one political party or the other will necessarily, you know, be in the majority. And the other question, question is just, so I just wanted to, you know, confirm that these aren't taking effect until after the next election. And then second question is just, I guess I should maybe attend a executive committee meeting at some point to understand this better, but the, the current makeup, I think Commissioner supporting this amendment commented that this goes from four to one to six to one? What, what's the current makeup? And is my understanding correct that the, even the current makeup of the executive committee, we, we do have representatives of both the city of Grand Rapids and city of Wyoming, and I'm not sure about Kentwood.
Yes, Kentwood.
And yes, Kentwood. So those three cities actually do have represent, so I guess I'm up to three questions. Sorry about that, Chair.
All right, I'll see if I can get them in order. So my understanding is, again, under the current order, rules, we have five members on the executive committee, and that's made up of the chair, the vice chair, and the chair and vice chair of the two standing committees. But since the minority vice chair must serve as a member, as an officer in one of those committees, the minority vice chair will be a minority, and the vice chair also sits on one of them. So you have five members, and that breaks down currently into the division to four majority members and one minority member. The proposed rules will go to three standing committees, so you would have a minimum of seven members on the executive committee. The chair and vice chair of each of the standing committees, one of those at a minimum has to be the minority vice chair. So you will have a, a minimum of one minority member sitting on the executive committee. Now, it's not mandated, it is certainly traditional practice, but it's not mandated that the other chair or vice chairs could be other minorities, but let's accept that that's generally not the case. The proposed rule would provide for the option of adding an additional at-large member to the executive committee from the minority party. And again, what, what jurisdictions get represented is not specifically addressed as I read the proposed rules. I think Commissioner Baker's comment was that, given the political realities, that generally will mean that the minority party is probably from one of those cities and the majority party generally not. Though I pointed out, I represent the city of Grand Rapids, too. Did I answer all your questions, or was there?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, Commissioner Baker again.
Then actually, you know, I guess, guess things could change. So this is, I guess, a general comment and then a question. If then the political party representation, if Commissioner Coleman isn't satisfied with the outcome of the next election, is, would this whole body be okay with the fact that the arrangement would then be flipped by political party? So with that, under the, can, can someone explain to, to this body, what is the rationale that it is in the best interest of the county to exclude this extra person on the, on the executive committee? What is the rationale for saying at the discretion of versus and? How does that benefit this county?
So we generally don't engage in debate in this, so I take it that question is to me, as all questions must be.
I mean, this is deliberations. It's, I mean, why is it that this says, I mean, I think it's, this is a simple question. Why is it that says at the discretion of versus and? What is the rationale? I mean.
I will say, I'll give it my best shot, since I guess I'm the only one that can answer it unless I redirect it elsewhere, but it is to identify that this is a significant transition in how we do business at, at the commission. We are fundamentally changing the process. And I think that to the extent that we are engaged in fundamental process change that we think is going to yield better governance, it is still one that we should take carefully and methodically and thoughtfully. Is this one that should be moved immediately, or should we, should we do it a little more carefully? Because this issue can come back up, it could go back up next year. It is definitely going to come back up in early 2025, because the rules still require the review of the rules to be considered then. And at that time, I suspect that whichever way we go on this issue, it'll be back up for deliberation again by this, by this body. So again, my thinking is that it has to do with making sure we make these significant changes in a methodical way. Now, some may not agree that this is one that ought to be taken more slowly, I get that, but that's my best understanding. Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. So yeah, as I stated in my first comment, I appreciate the fact that the current draft has the ability to have that second member of the minority party provided the chair decides to do so. I think for me, what was, as, as I think about this, the fact that now that we have removed the chair's ability to, or the requirement that the chair, the chair of the board also serve as a chair or vice chair of a committee, essentially removing that double, doubling up for that position on the executive committee, which I think was a good change, keep in mind all the other things we must accomplish, that now means that of the seven members listed of the executive committee that are guaranteed, the dynamic would likely be, instead of the current four to one dynamic that we've had historically, or 25% of the executive committee being members of the minority party, we'll have one of seven, significantly less than that same percentage. And so by guaranteeing that that second spot be added, thereby ensuring the committee is at eight, it also preserves the current din, the current proportionality that exists that has existed over the lifetime of the executive committee and the minority vice chair. And the underlying thought process for me has always, has been, as I, as I think about this, we don't know the future outcomes of any election, of the future boards and, but I do know that what has worked in the past should continue to work in the future. And if we are expanding the executive committee, I want to make sure that we are retaining at least the, the current dynamic we have on that executive committee. You know, certainly if it were my preference, it would be probably even more proportional. But I do think that the current breakdown works, it could be improved upon, and why I certainly support this amendment, but I also appreciate the rule as it's drafted.
All right. Oh, Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. So I also thought that what we had in the first version included this as, the statement as an and, and that's one of the main reasons why I was in support of, of that version of it. So I just want to clarify, so the current makeup of the executive committee is four to one, which is actually, we only have a 20% representation from the minority party, and we're proposing with a six, the, the seven plus potentially one, that would bring us up to 25%. And right now, the dynamic is that we're almost 40%, 43% of the board, you know, the, the Dems and then the Republicans, just in terms of party split. So even, even though we're a larger portion of the body, we're still, this, this proposal would only get us to 25%. And I, I agree with what Commissioner Baker said in that, you know, the premise of that, which is that, you know, we want to make sure that there's representation across the board, and it doesn't have to be even, but it should definitely be a bit more proportional. So I will support this amendment, and I'll support the standing rules if it includes this amendment. If it doesn't, I won't be able to support it, because I, for, for one, I do believe that the date should be January of '24. I know we're not talking about that, we're talking about the amendment, but if we're, if that's going to be the date, then this has to be in it for me. And I think that it, it, it does matter that even though the executive, executive committee doesn't necessarily approve a lot of things, right, there's not a lot of things that require executive committee approval, the representation on that very formative committee does matter. And it should be a bit more reflective of the entire board. We now have 21 commissioners, that matters. And the proportion on the executive committee should not be going down, it should be going up, even if it's not even, as it probably should be, in proportion to the makeup of the, the board. We should continue to make sure that that's a value, that all, that all perspectives are represented on that, that group that does oversee the work of the, the larger commission. So I just wanted to note that I do support this, this amendment to the standing rule for what, 5.3, and I would hope that others would support it as well. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, I guess I would just, just a couple of comments. As was noted, I, those that sit on the executive committee know how few votes we take, other than approving minutes. I'm trying to recall, I think the annexation was the first vote we took this year, and that was simply to approve sending it to the full board. But, so it's not frequent, and the, the core of what we do is in our committee work and in our work here. And so the representation of, of the 45% represented in the minority, I have very intentionally looked at and assured that they participate. And I think if you look at all of the board appointments, it is pretty close to 45% of board appointments. I recall when I came in, that was probably significantly less, and I think we've made strides in assuring that every commissioner has a fair opportunity to participate in the critical work that we do. I accept it's a fair debate on the question of how should that play out at the executive committee, to the extent that it's involved in, in addressing some of the directions of this board. But that, for purposes of moving this in the direction of this restructuring, a, an option is in all probability going to be exercised, because it frankly doesn't change the dynamic, whether it is six to one or six to two. So I guess I'm supporting, not supporting the motion to amend at this point, but just would advise folks to keep in mind that we're still moving in the right direction with this. And, and I think that, I hope we can see through that and get on to the final approval. So with that, it was requested for roll call, so please take a roll call. Now, this is the motion to amend, the underlying motion, and the motion to amend as is for you in the written form, which would essentially change the appointment of the at-large minority member to the executive committee to a mandatory appointment of a minority member to the executive committee. Again, at the time the rules become effective presumptively this January 1 of 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to amend proposed standing rule 5.3, numeral five, Commissioners Antor, Baker.
Yes.
Breevy.
No.
Boujack.
No.
Burl.
No.
DeBoer.
No.
Diaz.
Yes.
Green.
No.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand.
No.
Coleman.
No.
LaGrande.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
No.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
No.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
No.
Mr. Chair, you have nine yays, 10 nays. The motion does not pass.
All right, we are back to the underlying motion to approve the standing rules as amended. If there is no further, Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's prudent for us to kind of take a second to, to think about where we are at the moment. Many of you that I have, many of my colleagues that I have had a commission, conversations with directly know that I'm a very frank person, I'm a very direct person. For the first nine and a half months that I've been on this board, I have been trying to do my best to work with our current procedures. It is my, and was my understanding that the changes that we were talking about debating would not only go into effect into next year, but would make the workings of this board more effective, more representative of our communities, and would allow each commissioner to have a higher ability to do our jobs. With that being said, I just sent some, an email to all of the commissioners if you would like to review it while I'm talking, I think it would be helpful. My point that I'm trying to make is that it is a fact that in Michigan, county commissions are still gerrymandered. And if we go based off of the most recent vote total, which was last year, the majority party won 12 seats with only 50% of the vote. Of those seats, the majority party, on average, won with a margin of 21%, and the minority party won on an average, won with an average of 37%. I represent a district that's 52% Latino. If I'm not mistaken, I am the first Latino to be elected to this board. The population, the Latino population of this county is over 70,000 people, almost 12% of the population. If we were going based off of population alone, there would be two Latinos currently serving on this board, or at least two districts with a plurality, plurality of Latinos electing a person of their choice to this board. Now, I didn't say anything for the first eight and a half, nine months, because again, I thought that we were building a certain level of trust on this board to be able to again, conduct our jobs that we were elected to do. Some of my colleagues, my colleague to my left in seating, if not in ideology, has already expressed concerns with the number of committee meetings for the legislative committee that have been canceled this year. Another colleague on this board has expressed to me that they are concerned that if the balance of this board were to change in a future election, perhaps the minority party at that time would not like the current way that we operate this board. I am currently forced to conduct the business that I was elected to do through email and behind closed doors, because I do not have the ability to publicly talk about the things that I would like to do on this board. On top of that, to be told by a member of leadership of this board to stop essentially doing my job. of this board to stop essentially doing my job by talking to members of the administration about debates or things that I would like to talk about, to me is extremely disrespectful. To me, it's tantamount to asking me to silence myself and in turn to silence the voices of the people who elected me to this position. So with that being said, I did have an amendment prepared today to essentially un-gerrymander the Executive Committee. As has been laid out, there are very few vote, votes taken in the Executive Committee. But I do think that that representation, if we had a, an Executive Committee that more accurately reflected not the makeup of this board, which we already have established, and the data has established is gerrymandered, but the actual will of the people, we would have a more representative board. I'm not going to be making that motion today because I, for one, and most importantly, I think, believe that it is important to lead by example. And although, in my view, a lot of trust has been damaged by not only the workings of the board in this current term, but even in the last term, I still think that it's better for me to try and do my best to work with the majority and to continue building relationships to hopefully have a better process before my time on this board. It's that. So with that being said, I hope that we can do better. There are clearly a lot of divisions on this board, not only within parties themselves, but within the entire board. And hopefully next year will be a better year for us. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? If not, yeah, I'm not sure. It is a roll call vote, but I think it is best to call the question on the underlying motion on a roll call basis. So Madam Clerk, on the underlying motion to approve the proposed rules as amended.
On the motion to adopt Resolution 110, Commissioners Antor, Baker.
No.
Breevy.
Yes.
Boojak.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Diaz.
No.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
No.
Merchant.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
No.
Teal.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 15 yays, four nays. The motion passes. Resolution 110 is adopted.
All right. Thank you all. We will now move to the next item, which is public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners on matters of our general jurisdiction, you may do so at this time. Please identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes. Good morning.
How you doing, everybody? My name is Dee Jones. Stay at 967 Tamarack Avenue. Didn't say it last time, but before I actually, the same day I was speaking at Kent County Commission last time, I actually was going to connect with Mike Ford, who you guys know as Gerard R. Ford's son, his oldest son. I'm one of the Presidential Ford Fellows, and so I'm not a Republican or Democrat. I'm an independent, but I actually love Gerard R. Ford. He's actually one of my favorite presidents. And I really love his love for humanity and his love for the people. And I think that anybody can notice that, regardless of color. And so me being a Ford Fellow, I get to connect with the Republicans, and I get to go to these cool events around the city, and I get to do cool things. And I'm excited because they love the work that I'm doing around esports, the Presidential Foundation, and all these people know who I am. And one day, I feel like I could be able to, I'm not going to be able to bipartisally change a lot of things, but I think I can get Democratic and Republican support on the things that I'm doing to change our community in our county. And I just came from Oakland, California. I was at this event because I'm a, I work for C4. I'm independently contracted through C4, and we got $200,000 to develop a ride share. And it's going to be the first ride share in Kent Counties. And so, in the state of Michigan, actually. And so I'm really excited about this, just because it's an opportunity for us to do something innovative. I actually ran into a black-owned electric vehicle company, and their electric vehicles are very beautiful, and they look foreign. And I'm just really excited for the work I've been doing. I also got to connect with some organizations out there in California, like the California's mayor and different government entities and the school district out there. And there was this esports museum, and it was the only one of its kind on the planet, on the face of the United States. And I happened to be staying around this hotel, where I got to stay at this hotel for free, completely free for six days. And I walked over there, and I seen this pen as I walked in there, and I seen that they did game design and game development as I walked in there. And I was just like, all right, this is crazy. I believe this, 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 the universal energy I've been putting out there, and I don't believe in coincidences. So I happened to walk on their table, and it was something, a pen, and it said Epic Games on it. And I've been connecting to all of these colleges, all of these universities, all of these entities, Kent District Libraries, all of these different entities, the Epic Games. So I looked at this pen, and I said, can I have this pen? I actually know Epic Games. I could connect you guys to them. So while I was out there in California, I was able to connect these organizations in California to Epic Games. Going to be doing some work out there. Then I also ran into their library district as I was at an additional event for an event that I was already at. And they wanted to build esports out there. So I'm expanding my work out there into California. I know how innovative I am. I really look forward to the work I'm doing. And when I get that article in the Presidential Foundation, you guys will see esports. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning once again. Daniel Scott, longtime resident of the county. Again, I just want to praise the Lord for the thousands of dear babies not being murdered anymore at 320 East Fulton. Our prayer is that Grand Rapids and Kent County would be a sanctuary city and a sanctuary county for the unborn. But there's still work to do. As I've noted before, the place at 425 East Cherry called Planned Parenthood, which I like to call Planned Genocide, continues to dispense the murder pill, RU486. And part of the reason I come here, time after time, is to either remind you or maybe share with you these facts that you have not known. I didn't know them until I started to dig deeper. Pharmacies are pushing this pill, murder pill, without an office doctor visit to ensure that the pregnancy is not ectopic. If a woman takes this murder pill, she could be hospitalized or die, and many are dying, mothers. How does it work? A woman takes the first pill, which cuts off nutrients, starving the child to death. The woman then takes a second pill that forces the delivery of the dead child at home, usually into the toilet. She's directed to give birth to the child in the toilet and flush the child down the drain. Planned Genocide charges $500 to $800 per pill. So are they interested in life? No, they're interested in making money. Since the FDA rushed this drug through the approval process in 2000, the rate of chemical abortions, as they call it, ER visits in America has increased by more than 500%. 500% increase since this murder pill has been dispensed. And of course, it's being dispensed without a prescription to teenage girls, pre-teenage girls. Planned Genocide, 96.6% of pregnancy-related services are directly tied to murdering the child. They are not a full-service women's health clinic. Let me remind you, the founder of Planned Parenthood, Margaret Sanger, said this, "We don't want the word to get out that we want to exterminate the Negro population. They are human weeds, reckless breeders, spawning human beings who never should have been born." I'm proud that I've been accepted to talk at the women's branch of the Ku Klux Klan. She was also personal friends with Adolf Hitler.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Marcus Ragnalda, Gaines Township resident, here to talk about your ARPA contingency funds. First thing I want to say is great, Kent County's a great place to live. I love living here. And I appreciate all the hard work you guys do. I know you want to make this place even better, which is certainly what I've been trying to do with the Four Star Theater. So, quick update on that. We're making the most of our half-million-dollar ARPA allocation. There was some controversy around that. Not here to talk about that. I think taking the high road is going to help us achieve our ultimate vision. Next week, we're drawing into our ARPA funds for a new roof, coming in way under budget, 100% Burton Heights businesses getting this done. And with those savings, we're going to invest in a heating and cooling system that will allow us to double our occupancy. In the meantime, we're going to have estimated 1,000 visitors to the venue in our current state. We've had a Berlin-based jazz group come through, a UK-based electronic show come through, a San Francisco-based hardcore punk band come through, doing a film series. Just got a Google review while I was sitting here for Rosemary's Baby last night, and it still looks like a 90s nightclub. So Halloween is a big draw. So we've got two big events coming up in the next week, all while managing $100,000 from the Lowe's Hometown Program to enhance the lobby and bathrooms. What we don't have resources for is auditorium, green room, handicap accessibility, all things that will assure the sustainability into the future. So that brings me to the ARPA contingency funds. I don't know what's gone on with the deliberations, but I'm told that $6 million is going to the medical examiner facility. Took a quick look, a $6 million request was made, $6 million allocated initially with a note about general funds being used. Now another $6 million is going in. I don't know if it's way over budget. I don't know if general fund priorities have changed. But if you can't build for $7 million today, what was $6 million a year ago, someone's screwing up. So I see a 23% increase in federal deficit over a year, and I think could attribute some of that, of course, to nine-figure checks being written to counties. So I appreciate the hard work. I can see hard budget decisions are made. But what's been missing through, from the whole process, from my perspective, is really just the impact per dollar spent. You know, these are taxpayer funds. I don't expect to change most of your minds. That's a reality. But we're doing the most with it. And I, the least you could do is talk to your colleagues in state government, local government, local funders, to get behind these projects. There's a lot of them that receive those funds that could do more with more. And even if it's not going to come from this allocation, I hope you can help us out. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, we'll move to the next item, which is the Administrator's report.
I have just a couple items for you today. We did have our last two quadrant meetings last week, one in Nelson Township and one in Cascade. Interesting meetings, a lot of good information, but also interaction with our local elected and appointed leaders. Watch your inbox for two major report updates. One will be the ARPA report. Josh is putting the finishing touches on that. And Mark and Tim are working on the space needs and recommendation, and that we should have that turned out no later than early next week. We've been really busy as a legislature. Activity quickens as they hasten towards a date yet completely unknown, as far as when they're going to end activity this fall, both equally on terms on offense, such as our new judge bill, which is before Senate Judiciary today, and then also defense on things like an initiative that would make staffing a mandatory subject of collective bargaining with all para-labor groups. So we've been on offense and defense, been putting a lot of time in with PAA and also with MAC as we kind of work both our initiatives and keep what we consider to be not-so-great things from happening to us as well. So that's it for today.
All right. Thank you. Move to item 11, reports. Anyone have a report? Vice Chair Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I have two things to report on. First, yesterday, Commissioner Burl sent out the airport report for the last two months. There's been a lot going on there. And one thing we're hoping to see by the end of the year is another record year for passenger travel. And that would go over and above our best year, which was 2019. So people are traveling, and they're traveling through our Ford International Airport, which is a wonderful thing. The next item would be the Early Childhood Milage. We are working on our report right now, and that should be out in a couple weeks. And then it will go to Chair Steck, once our committee approves it. So we are finishing up our project there.
Thank you. Any other reports? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. The Governing Board for KCCA met this week. The main developments from that discussion, one, the home ARP funds that this body accepted and approved, and the plan that went along with it to provide transition assistance for homeless folk or those who are at risk of homelessness, living outside of Grand Rapids and Kentwood, or living outsides of Grand Rapids and Wyoming, forgive me. They have since sought proposals to, on how to expend those dollars. They have reviewed, I think, five to six of them, and the staff will be determining awardee shortly. In addition, we received a report on some of the work they've done on utility assistance, fully expending state dollars that have been given, continuing to struggle with expending a small program that is administered with the City of Grand Rapids for those who are ratepayers of the water utility there. But it appears that many of those headwinds that they face that have been challenges in the past are being met with a new contract that is subject to approval this year. And so hopefully, going forward, those dollars will be spent, fully spent down every year afterwards. So with that, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Any other reports? Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. The Kent County Senior Milage Review Committee met last week to, one, elect a new chair and vice chair for the committee, and that was done after long time, long-time-serving Chair Nancy Nielsen stepped aside. And so we have, we were able to set the schedule for when RFPs would be released, for the new services that we are hoping to be able to consider for the next milage funding cycle. And hopefully, we'll have some more information coming earlier in the year, once we do have that meeting, and decide what the process is going to look like and what services are being prioritized.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else on a report? If not, we'll move to miscellaneous, any miscellaneous items. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So I first want to congratulate Ivan. He's been working on this project at the, I keep forgetting, the factory yards. And he took me a tour on that. And if you look in that section of the city, it needs a little help. And what the building looks like now and what is proposed to go there is going to be nothing short of remarkable. And congratulations on the huge grant from MEDC to make sure that funding gets going and something gets to work. What I want to comment on today is, I want to tie on to Daniel Scott's remark in his first public comment about marijuana. So if you look at, at the state, you know, it, it continued years ago with the thing called the state lottery. And this was going to be something that would help public schools and their funding. And during all their advertising, you always hear how, how many billions they have gone to pay for public schools. And when I was on school board back then, it didn't take long to do the math, is that every dollar that the state lottery raised, the general fund took a dollar out. So it's never been an enhancement millage, which it was sold on. It was basically just a tax. And from the state lottery, we now find it acceptable to have sports gaming. And you can bet on anything. It's not just the game, how many times the quarterback's going to throw an interception to, I guess, what color jerseys they're going to be wearing. And it's, it's all in the name of money. And now we hear that it's acceptable at college games that you can have alcohol, I guess, while you're gambling on the game that you're watching, and the enjoyment and the benefits that we are always told about sporting events, just, you know, I guess it's just not, you know, important. But then you can dovetail on to the other one. We were told that medical marijuana was something that, you know, would be needed. It's, it can help people. The CBD takes the THC out, so it's not as harmful and can, can do some good. I've looked at the research on that. I've looked at the research on that. But then we had a ballot proposal that said, you know, we need just to legalize marijuana. And once again, it was sold to us as a moneymaker for the state. Sitting on the Substance Abuse Advisory Board about a year ago, they did a little survey of teenage people, and they saw not a large, but a small uptick in the use of marijuana. And thankfully, the survey added a follow-up question is, for those that answer that they're now using at that age, what is the reason that they made to start using? And the number one thing that came back was, you know, we're seeing our parents do it, it's, you know, it's got to be okay. And now we're hearing there's a ballot proposal that someone wants to put together to legalize those so-called magic mushrooms. And I think Mr. Scott was right. I mean, be careful what we, you know, wish for, and everything is driven by money. And it's funny, when you look at this, the state of Michigan and the federal government calls these types of taxes that raises money for these types of things a sin tax. And a sin tax is basically described by the government as an excise tax on specific goods and services due to their ability or perception to be harmful or costly to society. And you look at everything that I just listed, they haven't enhanced our society. They've drawn great concerns on, as a society, where we're going, and I just want to give props to Mr. Scott for pointing that out, because it is important. And how we vote and what we vote on, and the reason we do that should be for the good of society, not just to raise more taxes so government can grow and then provide all these services that you hear at the end of the ads, that if you have a gambling problem, call here. If you've got a substance abuse problem, call this number. And frankly, I don't know if the money's coming in, is covering all the services that are needed for the new users and abusers of these so-called sin taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, first I want to, I would disagree with my colleague, Commissioner Diaz, on the apparent divisions in this body. I don't, I haven't seen these apparent divisions. I've seen disagreements. Disagreements haven't necessarily been along party lines. The only time I've seen these divisions, so to speak, have been discussing the rules that govern us. I mean, I'm not really, to some extent, I don't even see the point of having a partisan county commission. It just seems like, for the most part, we're here to decide on the sheriff's budget, or on mental health services, or on what's happening at the courts. But for some reason, we have this partisan thing, and we don't need to fight it. I do want to apologize to Commissioner Steck and Commissioner Brevie about my apparent disregard for your geography of your districts, including Kentwood and Grand Rapids, or anyone else who I excluded. But we do know that these lines are geographically based, and from this side of the perspective, it does appear that the communities that the Democrats represent are excluded from the conversation when it comes to the Executive Committee. And either the Executive Committee, as is stated, doesn't really do much that's important, even though it does look important if you read the standing rules, the work that's done, or we don't include it. So I also don't see how it's methodical to leave, so in January of 2025, when we'll, the same week that we'll have another presidential inauguration, that somehow we're going to be in the mood for bipartisan, you know, togetherness, and the future chair, who we don't know, will be of a mindset to bring everybody together. So hopefully that's true. It's not methodical. It'll be based on the whims and whatever expectations that that person has on whether or not they choose to include a member of the minority party. So this is not, has nothing to do with my experience on this board. I mean, Chair Steck, I think, has been incredibly fair with the representation. I expect that the next chair will do the same, and I do believe that we've gone the right decision. I visited this chamber many times last year, and it was not a place that partisan divides weren't on display. And so I would hate for this to become a place that that happens again. I don't understand why, on this particular issue, we don't just create rules that allow for maximum inclusion of people from different perspectives and geographies. That's what drove me to this. It's not a strong partisanship, it's a strong feeling of nonpartisanship, and that these somehow set up rules that require partisanship, and it's disturbing to me. And that's probably more my own ideological wish that we just all get along, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I would just say, I appreciate the Commissioners' comments just before me, and I, for one, am always in the mood for bipartisan togetherness. So I appreciate the continued work of this whole commission, and I just want to take a minute to, sometimes the details of standing rules and other, you know, minutia of the commission is not very accessible to the public who isn't in the details like we are. So I just want to take a brief moment to state for my constituents, first, you know, thank them for allowing me to serve now nine years on this board, which time flies when you're having fun. But I really appreciate that, and in that nine years, I've only gotten to see one redistricting of county commission districts. But I did, I did watch on YouTube some of the apportionment committees' meetings, and I know, exciting. So from what I saw, both local parties had proposed a, to ensure that there was a majority Hispanic district in Kent County, and I, for one, applaud both parties for proposing that, and am very happy that that happened. And for my constituents who don't understand, you know, all the details of the process, I just let them know that there aren't any behind-the-scenes emails that I can send to any of my colleagues or the administration. All of our emails are public record. Now, certainly a Freedom of Information Act, you know, request would get at those emails, but for my constituents, if they have a particular, you know, bit of information or want to see any email that I've sent on a particular topic, I'm happy to just forward it, just reach out and ask me. And then specifically, you know, for the frustration sometimes of, you know, my one vote, you know, I can't, you know, get my perspective, you know, represented, I've certainly had that over the years, you know, a number of times. But I just want to make clear to the public that the process, if you haven't read in detail our standing rules, or the even more exciting Roberts Rules of Order, I understand how this is, kind of seems not transparent what the process is. But really, all it takes, you know, is if I, as a Commissioner representing my constituents, feel it's important to discuss something, I'm able to do that in this miscellaneous section of each meeting. And if I feel it's important to bring something even to a vote, all it takes for me as a Commissioner is to find one other Commissioner who would support that proposal, and I can get that proposal on a meeting agenda. So we have a kind of two-party representation here. I think in future standing rules, we should be, continue to be careful that, you know, there could be representatives of, you know, more than two parties on this board, or, you know, nonpartisan. I certainly think that could be good, too, but that we continue to operate and make sure that the rules are in place to allow that minority perspective to come to the table for discussion. And I just want to assure my constituents that that is all it takes, is just me and one other Commissioner, to get something on the agenda of a meeting and bring it up for official discussion. So thank you for the time.
All right. Oh, I think Commissioner Legrand was next.
Thank you, Chair. I will be quick. Having been at the CMH conference earlier this week and then hearing our Network 80 presentation today, I just want to underline for everyone here what huge strides forward these two projects are that were highlighted today, the CCHBC and the Crisis Stabilization Unit. And I want to thank my colleagues for their support with ARPA money for that crisis stabilization unit. The fact that it's going to save resources for law enforcement, for our Sheriff's Department, for our area emergency rooms, and also keep beds open so residents can stay close to home for care is, it's such a step forward, such a better use of money and resources, and it's just really going to help the people who need it. And the CCHBC is also really going to transform how we deliver mental health care in this area, and I do have to give a shout out to one of its biggest champions, and this is a nationwide thing, and that's our Senator Debbie Stabenow. She has been stalwart in promoting mental health and promoting this particular model, and she's provided our particular location a lot of support. So really excited to see how this is going to improve our community life in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to, I want to kind of address, let me talk to you. Okay. I'd like to just encourage our newer Commissioners. I've been a new Commissioner before, as all of us have been, and sometimes it does feel like you, like your voice is not heard. Sometimes we're disillusioned when we, you know, become Commissioners, when we're running for office, and things that we want to do in office, and you were elected by the people that know that you can do the job, and they put their faith and their trust in you, so keep doing what you're doing. You're very zealous, and I appreciate that. I appreciate your work, and I just, I don't want any of us to give up. This is a very tough political climate right now, and as Commissioner Baker said, we're here doing the work together. And so I want all of us to be cognizant of each other and the work that we are doing together, so that we can move Kent County forward. And if you just happen to be a little louder, you know, than the rest of us, that's quite okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to take a moment to acknowledge the conditions that the people of Palestine are currently living under, specifically apartheid conditions. There are about 2 million people living in Gaza right now. Half of those are children. I think it's unfortunately the case that regardless of which party is in power in the White House, that we still have funding always available for war and to bomb people, and yet not enough apparently to address the needs of our constituents and our citizens and residents here in the United States. So I'd just like to remind anybody watching that there are people unfortunately being killed and maimed all over, and it's important to keep that in mind when we're talking about current events. And as we hopefully communicate with our representatives at Congress and in the United States Senate, it is likewise important to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boojak.
Thank you, Chair. I had the opportunity to attend the county, or the Airport Authority meeting yesterday, and one of the things that was very impressive that came out of that meeting is that our airport was rated the number-one airport in America for airports of its size. So we are truly blessed with having this airport, this international airport in our community. A lot of that hard work came from this county commission many years before the Airport Authority took over. The Airport Authority has now taken that to the next level, and I think we'll see the airport continuing to serve and expand the region, and kudos to the work that's being done there. I also wanted to make a comment regarding Commissioner Diaz and his passion for his As being a new Commissioner here for 10 months now, I really believe that 99% of everything that we've done here as a commission has been done in a collaborative, unilateral, or bipartisan way, and, you know, the one thing that we voted on party lines was this standing rules. And I tend to focus on the 99% and not worry about the 1%, and I'm looking forward to 2024 and working collaboratively in a bipartisan fashion, providing services to the county and the people, good people of Kent County. So looking forward to the work that's being done here.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I was trying not to be unduly repetitious, but to Commissioner Boojak's point, I actually thought I would underpin something. I agree with the sentiments made by Members Baker and Sparks, and, you know, when I think about the disagreement we had today on the amendment, I do want to emphasize, at least in my view, this is not because I feel that the current operations are substandard, but again, a desire to preserve that as we evolve our board makeup and our committee structure. But on top of that, underline that, yes, there are, 99% of the votes are nearly unanimous and have broad bipartisan support, and we have a dynamic that allows for relationships to forge and trust to forge. And I look, I would just urge us to look to those moments when we go through disagreements, because it's the strength of our, the times that we cooperate that make disagreements easier to have, so that we can have them in open, frank, and deliberative ways, and serve our constituents in the way they expect it. So for that, I want to appreciate folks for the substantive dialogue we've had this morning, and enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on miscellaneous item? All right. If not, allow me just a few comments. First of all, thank you again to the Rules Committee for the hard work that was put in to bring us to this point of approving a new set of standing rules and a restructuring of how this body operates. I think that we've asked of this committee probably three times what we have in the past of these Rules Committees, and you've done yeoman's work on that. And as well, thank you to the Commission for continuing your consideration of these rules. This represents what I suggest is a fairly significant restructuring of process. It is intended to enhance our capacity to govern and to govern well, which is one of our fundamental commitments to our constituents. But it is a significant change, and the reallocation of the responsibilities and the flow of work through these committees is not something that'll just fall off the shelf. This is going to take a lot of staff work in restructuring. I appreciate Al's optimistic comments last time as to how much time does staff need in order to grease this to the point where we can do it? He says three months. Okay. In administration speak, that means six months.
Means a month and a half.
Ooh. And we have, we've got a lot of things on our fork between now and the end of the year, and maybe going into the first quarter. So I know some of my colleagues would prefer to have had these changes implemented sooner rather than later, but given the things that we have on our plate, given the complexity of making sure that when we make this big of a change, we do so effectively and smoothly, I think it's wise that we take the time over the course of 2024 to work on how do we do this implementation effectively and smoothly. Likewise, I think that means over the course of next year, we do spend time thinking about how is this set of rules and changes and process going to play out, and are there further refinements? Those of us that sat on this committee know that these conversations have no clear finality to them. They have points where we will land, and at points where we have to make decisions, but that does not stop us from continuing to look. And we need to continue to look and think and analyze and debate and deliberate about what is it that's going to work best for us when we get to the effective date. So let's use next year wisely. With respect to where are we going in the allocation of responsibility and authority between our Republicans and Democratic colleagues and friends? Commissioner Baker, I go back to, somebody's wisdom in Lansing sometimes said that these should be partisan, and they have been ever since. So we've long said we will deal with what was within our control, we won't waste a lot of our energy on what we can't do anything about. We won't waste a lot of our energy on what we can't do anything about. What we can do something about is making sure that we respect each other regardless of party, that we respect each other regardless of perspective, and that we work collaboratively for the best interests of this county. And that means working together. So when I started, I recall some prior colleagues saying, why would you appoint a Democrat to a committee? Why would you do that? You don't have to. Well, it is because we all represent counties. We represent the entire county. And so I think I and my predecessors, and I hope my successors, take the same position, which is it is our responsibility to ensure that all of our commissioners are engaged in this process because we all have the same calling and the same fiduciary duty. So I've worked hard at trying to make sure that there are as many appointments for Democratic members as there are for Republican because it really doesn't make a difference. We're all committed to that same work. When it comes to the Executive Committee, it's a little bit of a unique thing. I just went through it again to look at this. What is the Executive Committee responsible for? Well, considering issues as requested by the chair. Oops, that's me. And provide regarding various processes and special initiatives as requested by the chair. Again, oops, that's me. And then there is this question of annexation and vacancies. So it is really a committee that's intended to provide direction but not to make decisions. And at the end of the day, it's the decisions of this body and the work at the committees is where we really make this sausage. So are we moving in a direction? I think that was the intent on the part of this Rules Committee to say, we're willing to move as a majority in a direction. We're taking it slow. Too fast for some, too slow for others. I've got it. But let's keep in mind the big picture. Let's look at where we're going. Keep talking. I appreciate the collaboration that we've had. I agree with my commissioners. For all of the talk of partisanship and how our communities are divided, if you look at what we've done as a commission, how many of those ultimately don't end up being pretty close to unanimous votes? They don't have to be. They probably shouldn't be maybe in all cases. But we are collaborative, and I think at the end of the day, we get the job done for this community effectively by working together. And I think that is the commitment of everybody around this table. Enough preaching. I will now call on Commissioner Green for a final motion.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move to adjourn subject to the call of the chair to Thursday, November 9, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
All that support, say yes.
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.[1786.73]